Welcome to our event. We're so glad that you made it. We're so glad that so many candidates could be here tonight. This is not a debate, it's just a discussion. I get to know you for all of the school board candidates this spring. The election is on May 3rd. And I'm really excited to get to know everyone. We have 11 candidates here. We also have four candidates who couldn't make it. I'm going to read their answers at the end of each question. I am not going to do it in different voices. That will be it. Candidates, there's a little time suggestion on each question. I'm going to time you really loosely and just raise my hand when we get near that point. Please just wrap it up when I raise my hand. That would be great. I think with no further ado, also, this is being screamed, screened on MCAT. This presentation is being recorded by Missoula Community Access Television as part of a media assistance grant donated to this presentation by MCAT. So we're very thankful for that. All right, let's get started. Who's up first? It's Megan Witcher. And the first question is not hard. Can you tell us about yourself?
Sure. My name is Meg Witcher. I go by she/her pronouns. I am a Northside resident, a mom of a nine-month-old. I work for the City of Missoula Parks and Recreation as a Recreation Programs Manager. So pretty much get to interact with lots of different families from across the MCPS district, as well as actively program and collaborate with the school district on a regular basis. So that's kind of a little bit of background on me. I absolutely love being outside and active, and I'm pretty obsessed with our community's children.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we've got Keegan Witt.
Yep. So I grew up in Sidney, Montana, which is over 600 miles away, yet still somehow in Montana. It's much closer to North Dakota, about 10 miles away from North Dakota. I graduated from Sidney High School in 2003, and then had this odd idea that I was going to be an engineer. So I went all the way to New York and Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute to study engineering. And after two years, I was like, no, this ain't right. Like, engineering isn't my fit. I took the one accounting class they had, thought it was easy, thought it really fit my skill set. And at that time, my best friend from high school was here in Missoula, and he was begging me to transfer over. I listened to him, happy I did. Graduated from UM in 2008 with two degrees, one in accounting, one in finance. I started working in public accounting shortly thereafter as an auditor, and still do that. And I studied and received my CPA license in 2009. I'm a single father of two boys. They're 10 and six. They both attend MCPS. We enjoy spending a lot of time outside. We hike, camp, raft, ski, play hockey, just tons of activities. Outside of my time with them, I spend a lot of time swimming, biking, and running because I do triathlons, particularly long-distance ones. I like the half Ironman. As far as community goes, I've always been active here. I've been a board member of Flagship in the past. I did that for like five, six years. I was a mentor with Big Brothers Big Sisters for several years, and now I'm in Kiwanis. I coach my six-year-old in hockey. I'm going to do that for another couple of years at least. And I look forward to serving on the school board, where I think my experience and financial expertise could be very valuable.
Next up, we have Nathan Gibson. Hi, Nathan.
Hi. So apparently, I'm Nathan Gibson. I work it. I too grew up in a small town in Montana, Victor, just down the road from here, on a ranch. I've been in Missoula for a little over 20 years now. I came here to go to college and just never left, and also took me about 15 years to graduate. I'm a microbiologist. I do research at the university now. In the past, I coached soccer and taught martial arts to kids. I'm into backpacking, camping, all those great outdoor activities we enjoy here in Montana. Play quite a few video games. And I just really want to start contributing to the community. And so here I am, running for school board.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, Amy Livasay.
Thank you. My name is Amy Livasay. I am happily married to my husband Mark, and we celebrate our 20-year anniversary this year. I feel like that's something to celebrate for sure. We have one, I have one grown stepdaughter who's 27, and then I have two younger children, Eli, who is 12, and Emmy, who is nine. I am a cancer survivor. When I was 24, I was diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma. And it taught me that I, and I, and all people are capable of more than they think they are. I'm a five-time Ironman finisher, and that taught me that a lot about endurance and perseverance in hard times, I guess. And we've also owned several businesses. We're entrepreneurs. So we've owned several businesses over the years, which I believe has honed kind of my problem-solving skills and my ability to think outside of the box. I'm also, I actually homeschool my kids. I went to public school. I loved it. I had every intention of sending my kids to public school, but we moved the year that my son started kindergarten. And my husband had to travel a lot for work. And so it just seemed like if we wanted to be together as a family, we would just keep him home that year. And then it just has kind of just stayed that way. And so a lot of people have asked me, why would a homeschooler want to run for school board, and then are you going to put your kids in school? And I kind of tell them that I really believe that my kids are getting an excellent education, and they don't have to deal with a lot of the issues that are in the public schools. And if I care about my own kids and what they're getting, then I should care about all the other kids. COVID's kind of gotten us all pulled into ourselves. But the reality is, is that if we're going to love our neighbors, we need to love our neighbors. And so that's part of why I want to run. We love doing things. We live on Blue Mountain, so we hike and bike, and we have llamas, if you've ever seen them on 93. Those are our llamas. So we love to do things with them and just to be outside together.
Thanks so much. I do know your llamas. Next up, we have Ann Wake.
Hi, my name's Ann. My name's Ann Wake, and I'm sorry. I don't like this, but that's okay. I live in Lolo, and I've lived there for 26 years. I have two grown sons. One went to the MCPS, and I have a grandson who also went to MCPS. I ran for the school board approximately 13 years ago. I enjoy doing the work that I do as a school board member. And I am running in for the District A seat.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Kyla Tripp.
All right. Well, obviously, the name is Kyla Tripp. I'm actually married into the Tripp's about 15 years ago. It's a very enormous family, so I'm sure that all of you have probably heard of a Tripp at one point or other in your life. And yes, they're probably related to my husband in some way. So we have two children, a 13-year-old girl and an 11-year-old boy. They both attend Hellgate Elementary and have since they were in kindergarten. My husband also attended Hellgate Elementary and all the way up through eighth grade. So he's just been a part of that community for a long time. I've been a Missoula resident for about 30 years now. And, you know, this is what I call home. I don't really say that I was born in Spokane, but, you know, here I am in Missoula, and so I claim this as my home. And in addition to our family, I would, I cannot forget to mention that we have three other babies, and those are our French Bulldogs. We got Ted, Otis, and Della. And so they're incredibly noisy. And so when we go for walks around the neighborhood, I'm sure if you live in 44 Ranch, you've heard the snorting of pigs plenty of times as they walk through our neighborhood. But that's just a little bit about me. Pass it off to the next person here.
All right, next up, we have Rod Sharkey.
Hi, my name's Rod Sharkey. I have been on the Hellgate Elementary School Board for the past nine years. I'm running for reelection for my fourth term. Grew up in Missoula. I've been here basically my whole life. I'm a fourth-generation Montanan. My wife works at the school. My daughter went K through eight at Hellgate Elementary, then to MCPS, and is now a sophomore in Bozeman. It hurts my feelings, but she's in Bozeman. My son is a seventh grader at Hellgate Elementary. And I originally got involved with the school board because I wanted to make a difference in what my kids were learning and the direction that the school board would be going. And we have done a very good job at Hellgate Elementary, in my personal opinion, over the last 10 years. And I'm really looking forward to that trend continuing as we move forward. Yeah, I enjoy the outdoors. I enjoy living in Missoula. I'm a hunter, fisherman, scuba diver. We enjoy our summers at the lake and winters here at home. So, next is Jack.
Thanks so much. And yes, it is. It's Jack Babbin. Take it away.
Hi. I grew up in a farming town in Southington, Connecticut, and I escaped. And I was the oldest of eight kids. That was another reason why I escaped. But I came to the University of Montana and finished up my forestry degree and met my lovely wife Cindy in Abor Hall. How many have been in Abor Hall? Yeah, great place. All right. Well, we got married. She became a school teacher, and I was a smoke jumper forester for the Forest Service for a number of years. And she decided to stay home and raise her four girls. And we lived at the smoke jumper base, and I was on maintenance there for a number of years. Then I transferred over to take care of Fort Missoula as a maintenance engineer. And while I was in at Fort Missoula, I had my middle age crazies and joined the Navy Reserve, the Seabees. And I stayed with them for almost nine years. And when they moved, when the Navy Reserve moved to Helena, because Navy Reserve, they say, well, you know, a weekend a month and two weeks a year. Yeah, okay. Anyways, I went ahead and transferred and went to the dark side. I went to the Army. And I joined the Army Reserve as a warrant officer, and I had a great time. So the nice thing about the reserves of the guard is you can do a dual career and still do well at both careers. I served in Iraq with the engineer, 926th Engineer Brigade out of Montgomery, Alabama. And I also served with the Corps of Engineers in Afghanistan. Being affiliated with the military, I realized that the military is the largest school in the country, and they are very successful at what they do. And my wife had a student that came back after being in the military, and he said, Mrs. Babbin, when I was in junior high, I hated reading. And Cindy says, well, duh, I knew that. It was pretty obvious. But he said we were sitting around as military people, reading our manuals and reading our books so we could go in advance and rate and grade. And it dawned on us, you know what? Reading is pretty cool. And you told me that that would happen someday, and it did. Anyhow, my four daughters all went through Hellgate Elementary, and all of them are schoolteachers in one form or another. And the youngest one is a Defense Fellow for a senator on the Hill in Washington, DC. I have eight grandchildren from elementary school to high school, all utilizing public education in Oregon, Montana, and Colorado. And that gives me a really good cross-section on what's going on in certain parts of the country in education. And I love our school, Hellgate Elementary, because, you know, sometimes we come home and we just hug everybody that we have, teachers and whatever else. I'm deeply committed to the education of children today. I consider all Hellgate Elementary children as kind of like my grandchildren, and I want to make sure that they have the best that we possibly can have. I've been on the Hellgate Elementary Board for, since 1996, with gaps from being gone for work or for deployments and stuff. So I have been part of the-
All right, Jack, if you could just finish up.
Four more words.
Okay, great.
The school board navigated many necessary and innovative changes and expansions. So I'm very proud of them.
Thank you. All right, Tom Cook is up next.
I am Tom Cook, and I'm a candidate for the Hellgate Elementary School Board. I'm a retired music faculty member from the University of Montana with 40 years of experience as a teacher and a background of leadership as a department chair and an assistant to the dean of the School of Fine Arts. My wife and I have been here 42 years. We have a granddaughter in kindergarten at Hellgate, a daughter who is a counselor at the school, and my spouse is also a retired substitute teacher there. So I have experience as a professional educator and arts administrator. I've dealt with budgets and spending, supporting the needs of students and faculty, and handling sensitive confidential issues related to students and faculty members. I come from a family of teachers. My father was a high school band director, my mother a fourth-grade teacher. My only sibling has a doctorate in music education. My wife is certified in teaching. And there are others in our extended family, too, but we're really a family of teachers. In the community, I've directed church choirs. I'm co-founder of the UM Alumni Band that you see marching down the street on homecoming parade days, and also the Missoula Community Concert Band. And I volunteer at the Missoula Food Bank as part of my community activities. Radio has always been my hobby, and I'm now a program host on Montana Public Radio, which I enjoy very much. I have a passion for public education, and I value such traits as integrity, trustworthiness, honesty, and fairness. As a professional musician, I've learned to be a good listener. That's who I am.
Thanks so much, Tom. And finally, for our physically present candidates, Arlene Walker-Adams.
So I'm Arlene Walker-Andrews, and I've lived in Missoula for only 18 years. I grew up in Texas, one of seven children, not quite as many as eight, but seven. And my husband and I moved here with our, in, what was it, 2003. We have two daughters back on the East Coast, but we fell in love with Montana as soon as we got here. I'm running for the school board because I care deeply about public education, and I consider it to be the foundation of our democracy and the most important gift that we give to our children and youth as they acquire skills and knowledge that will both allow them to contribute as citizens, but also to reach their potential. And so my background really is 25 years of studying children's learning, teaching psychology at the university level, participating on NIH panels to look at research projects. And then I was the associate provost at UM, where I oversaw student academic services and facilitated accreditation and program reviews. When I retired, I volunteered for a while as a tutor at the Writing and Public Speaking Center, which I really enjoyed, until the pandemic came, and I wasn't willing to try to teach writing online. It just seemed very difficult to me. When our daughters were in school, I was on a school board for two terms, so I had done it before. And I'm now an appointee on the school board. I represent District B, which is Target Range and Bonner. So now I am as concerned with the education and future of my grandchildren, and indeed all children that live in Montana and Missoula and its outlying communities. We need to install in our children the abilities to think critically and re-motivate them to learn just for the sake of learning, to acquire that knowledge. So I offer experience and dedication to public education.
Thank you so much. All right, and I'm going to do the weird part where I read a few of the candidates who are not here. First up is Beth Wanberg. I'm reading in first person, so if you want to close your eyes. I am a wife, mother, foster mother, grandmother, and lifelong learner. Thus, my absence tonight, we are taking a computer class. You could say that I'm all about God, family, and community. My husband and I have four grown sons and 12 grandchildren. We also helped to see three foster children to adulthood during nine years with Missoula Youth Homes. Nine of our grandchildren attended schools in Montana. We have numerous friends and family with school-aged children, and I have a deep desire to help overcome a few issues we see facing our schools. All right, next up is Willina Oldperson. I grew up on the Blackfeet Reservation in Starr School. My parents are Leo and Cynthia Oldperson. My mother is from the So Happy Family on the Yakima Reservation. I have two sisters. One lives here in Missoula, too. I have four children, one at UM and three in MCPS, two at Lewis and Clark, and one at Washington Middle School. My oldest graduated from Sentinel. I'm involved in the Missoula community focused on justice, equality, diversity, and inclusion. I know what it feels like to be unheard and to face daily challenges, and I wanted to make an impact in my community so that my children would face a less harsh world if I'm able to impact our local community. I'm part of the Missoula Learn here in Missoula. I served on the Board of Directors for Empower MT and Open Aid Alliance, as well as a past chair for the Board of Directors for All Nations Health Center, then known as Missoula Indian Center. I earned my undergraduate degree at UM in History and Native American Studies, currently working on my MA in Anthropology. I work for UM in the College of Health since January 2010. I love working for public education. I primarily work with disadvantaged students and Native American students. All right. Next is Rob Woolick. I'm 34 years old, and I grew up in Missoula. I regret not being able to attend in person today, but my wife and I have just returned from a trip late Sunday night and are not feeling 100%. So I don't want to risk getting anyone else sick. I attended Target Range Elementary School, Lolo Middle School, Florence High School. I started my education at the University of Montana in Computer Science and later finished it online with a BS in Information Technology and Cyber Security. I eventually became a pilot and flight instructor in 2014, and moved around the country for work until returning to Missoula at the beginning of 2020. I now work for the Federal Aviation Administration as an aviation safety inspector, making sure our national airspace system is safe. My education experience as a flight instructor is useful in understanding the challenges educators face, and my federal employment means that you can be assured that I will remain nonpartisan and nonpolitical as an MCPS trustee. All right, Lorraine Hodge-Christensen. I have been on the school board for the last nine years. I attended the University of Montana and currently work as a mortgage lender. I moved back to Missoula in 2010 with my two children, who were in elementary school. I knew I wanted them to attend Hellgate Elementary, so I bought a house in the district. I feel very blessed my children attended this school. My son was in the special education program due to a learning disability, and I'm still thankful every day for the help that the teachers, staff, and administration gave to them. Since then, I have remarried and have three stepchildren that attend Hellgate Elementary. Now I have a grandchild in the school, and I couldn't be more proud. I attended the university to become an elementary school teacher, but my career path took a different route. I am happy that my volunteer work has been helping children and in the education field. I previously served on a nonprofit childcare center's board for eight years, with four years as board president, before moving back to Missoula. I was the Hellgate Elementary PTA president for the two years before joining the school board. All right, we have one more that's on my phone. Little bit of everything. All right. And this is Jill Taber. I grew up on a cattle ranch in Whitehall, Montana. My sister and I worked alongside our parents and grandparents, learning the importance of work ethic, getting a job done well, taking responsibility, and standing up for what's right and helping our neighbors. We felt the blessing of growing up in Montana and America every day, a legacy I want to preserve for my kids and future generations. I have degrees in journalism and finance and a master's degree in public administration from the University of Montana. My husband Nick and I have been married for 12 years. Our family enjoys golf, camping, spending time at the ranch, and all varieties of youth sports. I work as a freelance writer and editor, and also assist my husband in his financial services business. Our kids attend Lewis and Clark Elementary. I volunteer in the classroom as often as I can. All right, so that's everybody. Thank you. So much experience and so many cool stories. All right, let's just keep rolling. I'm going to use the lower time limit on this next question, since we are already going long. So the timer will be set at three minutes. And I might just interrupt you instead of waving my hand, since I'm over here. All right, first up, Meg, why don't you go ahead?
It was great to get to know everyone on the panel and see some actual faces. We were asked to talk about what our goals are in running for school board, and I want to be perfectly clear that it's not about what my goal is as Meg Witcher. It's about what our goal as a community is in regards to our public education. I'm not coming here out of self-interest. I'm coming out of community interest. I actively get to work with kids, teachers, administrators, neighbors, from nonprofits where I serve coaching kids on bikes, to, you know, the programs that I run. And I see what happens in our public school, the beautiful things. And I want in. I want part of that. I'm a very, very big proponent of good, positive governance. I work for municipal government. I know what it takes, and I know what happens in these platforms and how it sets forth a language that trickles down to even what our kids see. If our kids see our adults practicing good governance, they know that this is how we interact with our community members. We may not always agree, but we can find consensus, and we can agree to disagree and not try and sabotage each other. I'm very passionate about that good governance piece. I want to work on bringing collaboration and positivity and investment on multi-generational approaches to our public school system. Right now, behavioral mental health is a huge proponent of our school system. I see it every day. And to me, really talking about a multi-generational approach and investing in families through our public education system is something I'm pretty passionate about. Because this is public education, I think academic excellence is something that needs to be discussed. My impression of academic excellence is a very strength-based approach, and that it looks different for every child. And I want to be, bring to this system, having our administrators and our teachers and our students understand that academic excellence can be found in every single solitary child in our system. And I'm very, very passionate about that. We are setting the framework for our littles, our future, to become community members. And I am so incredibly passionate and stoked to be in the running for these positions where I can directly implement long, broad-based strategic planning. That's been done by MCPS in this platform. And that's, that's, I think, my two minutes.
Thanks, Keegan.
All right. So, yeah, it's always hard to follow up on Meg. So, because she's so much more passionate. So, as far as what I want to see with the school board, right now, we have a superintendent that is resigning. Like, he's done on June 30. And so the first goal is we got to hire a great superintendent going forward. We have Russ Lodge, who's been tapped to be the interim for an entire year. That gives us the time to conduct a quality search. You know, we're going to use a search firm, go through lots of resumes, and I'm sure we're going to have great candidates that want to come to Missoula because this is such a great place. I want that person to be an excellent communicator and to really buy into that strategic plan that was already passed by the school board. Other than that, I have four main things that I've been kind of running on. The first is I want to support teachers and administrators. The last few years have been very difficult on everyone. And teachers have had a really tough go. Like, there was a whole year there where they had half their students in class and half of their students online, and they had to do both of them in the same day. And then they had flipped, so it was the other half. And then the administrators had to kind of organize everything and get it going. And, you know, things were constantly changing. and, you know, things were constantly changing. I thought they all handled it with grace, and I want to continue to support our teachers and administrators going forward. The second is to keep the focus on public education and not politics. Public education exists to provide an education and life skills to all students. And schools, I don't think, are the place for the cultural and political hot topics of the day. The third is equitable access to education for all students. Schools need to be a safe place for everybody, regardless of their personal situations and what their life has outside of school. And resources need to be allocated based off of need at the individual schools, not necessarily the number of students at the school. These can be things like mental health counselors and making sure that kids have full stomachs. It's really hard to learn on an empty stomach, and I feel like if we're taking care of the children while they're at the school, they will be able to be focused on learning. And then the last item is good governance, kind of builds on some of the things Meg said. My piece, you know, is that I'm an accountant, and I think, you know, good governance requires some sort of financial expertise, looking at things. We're, it's a governing board. We are to try to implement the strategic plans, follow the goals, but we have to keep an eye on that budget as well. We do not currently have a financial expert, so I am excited to run and be that and give everybody a plain English description of what's going on.
Thanks, Keegan. All right, Nathan.
So, I think the future is incredibly important, and our students and our youth are obviously that future. And I think that we need to be doing everything that we can to support them and grow them and provide them with an education and all of the things that they need to become good citizens and good people. And as Keegan touched on, school board along with a lot of other aspects of our society right now have become incredibly political and very us versus them. And there is one option or another option, and those are the only two. And a lot of issues and situations devolve into an argument over one or two solutions. As a scientist, a lot of my strength is looking at situations from an objective standpoint and finding creative solutions to those problems. Sometimes that means compromise, sometimes that means thinking entirely outside the box. But a lot of what I'm witnessing is, again, just that A or B choice. And I think that I am somebody that can bring other options to the table and work to solve problems rather than, you know, spending a lot of time arguing over the meaning of the word equity or those sorts of things and just finding real solutions.
Thanks so much. Amy?
Well, I want to say I'm super encouraged to hear everybody talk about good governance and working together because I think that is, that is the problem that's going on today, right? Is that there's just two sides, and it becomes super divisive. And if we're going to move forward as a community, that we need to be working together as parents, teachers, administrators, students, and just community members to support the schools. So, like we've mentioned, one of my main goals would be, I know that teachers can teach well, but I know they're frustrated and they've been beaten down over the last two years. And so it would be to, as a board, to be on the board, to be listening to teachers, to what they see the issues are, so that we can take some of the roadblocks out of the way so that they can do their job to the highest degree that they know how to do it. I know a lot of them are frustrated, I've talked to them, and overwhelmed, those kinds of things. I also would like to see a little bit more transparency for parents and protecting parents' rights. There's several situations where I don't think parents have been respected or heard by the board either. And ultimately, all of these kids are first loved by their parents, and it's ultimately their parents who care the most about them and know what's best for them. So, we need to be actively listening to parents. I'd also like to see the board now seems to, it seems to be that it is a top-down. The superintendent works for the board and works for the community. And I feel like right now, that's not exactly happening all the time. So I would like for the board to have more say in what's going on as they listen to the parents and the teachers and interact with the students on a regular basis.
Thank you. Okay, Ann?
I want to say that I am very passionate about public schools, just like these other fellows up here on the, on the board, and that I would like to continue advocating for all of our students by following the guidelines contained in our state constitution under Article 10, which states, and I quote, "to establish a system of education which will develop the full educational potential of each person." I'd like to continue to advocate at the legislature for their continued support of the basic system of free, quality, public education, both elementary and secondary. I'd like to continue to work with the Montana State School Board Association, which I presently serve on as the municipal director and past president when meeting with our representatives in Washington, D.C. There are several things that legislature hasn't followed through with, and one of them is the, I don't want to say this. They don't, they aren't funding our schools for special education. And I can't remember the article number, I think it's number one for I D E A, which is presently being funded at 14%, which should be funded at 100%. And so I'd like to argue with that, to continue arguing for that in the future.
Thanks so much. Kyla?
All right. So, something that I did not mention in the About Me section, I am also a pharmacist. So, and I spent my early career focusing a lot on serving underprivileged and underserved communities and navigating the challenges that the people that are experiencing homelessness or living on reservations often experience and finding creative ways to overcome the challenges that they face and making sure that they're heard. And that's kind of what I want to bring into the school board, is focusing on kids almost as patients and making sure that their health and safety is at the center of every single decision that is made. I know that there's been talk about politics on the board, and I would say that it's more about the passion that parents have and on the values that they want their children raised with. So, it might seem political, but really it is how much passion people have for raising their kids. And I believe giving those parents a voice is the job of a school board representative. We are here to represent the public and not just be a board and giving voice to everyone, whether or not they are Democrat or Republican or even if they don't identify with either of those groups. And I want to start by making it easier for the public to stay involved by trying to do more outreach to the communities to make sure you guys are aware about what is going on and when so that you are able to speak up when you see an issue that really pertains to you or that you're passionate about. And bringing more involvement, because I think that's a huge thing that will help solve problems. Rather than having just several people on the board, we can get a bunch of community members involved and get all of their input and their creative options and getting them to be heard, because that's how problems are solved, is through a collaboration of passionate people. And I just think that that's something that's lacking a little bit right now, is that involvement. And it is hard as a parent, we're juggling a lot of different things that are going on. And so that is why I want to kind of streamline things and make it easier for everyone to stay aware about what's going on, whether that's through social media outreach or creating more visibility on the board website. And I guess I should mention that I am actually running on the Hellgate Elementary School Board. I don't know if I mentioned that to begin with, but that's basically the rundown.
Oh, thank you. Rod?
So, school district number four, Hellgate Elementary. I view it as the preeminent independent school district in the state of Montana. And the school district, in the ten, in the nine years I've been on the school board, the four things that I have focused on the most are parental rights. Especially in the last two years, our board has been divided more than it ever has in the previous seven years prior to that. And right from the get-go, I saw that, that a lot of the things that the parents were saying was, were not being listened to. And for me, parental rights is a, is a big topic. As a school board member, the number one thing that I focus on is fiscal responsibility. And so at every one of our school board meetings, I'm one of the guys that goes through line by line on every expense. Being an independent school district, we're small enough that we have the ability to do that. At M C P S, with the number of schools that they have, it would be impossible. But I keep a very tight finger on where our dollars are spent. It's important to me that I do that, I look out for the taxpayers. We have not run a levy in, at District Four for over 10 years, and we're proud of that. And especially with the ESER funds running out and the ESER Cliff, as it's being called, it's important that we look at fiscal responsibility and make sure that we're not burdening our taxpayers. Another thing that I'm passionate about is the standardized testing and how it is sometimes used to put both teachers and students into a bucket. I view that as critical, that we not lob people into buckets based on the testing numbers that we get. And I demand that we go through them every quarter at Hellgate Elementary, and I'll continue to do that. The standardized testing is one of the things that we use to determine our class sizes at Hellgate Elementary, and I'm very passionate that we maintain small class sizes so that the teachers have the ability to work more closely, one-on-one with the students, and the students can have a more intimate learning experience. So, those are kind of the things that I've always set as goals as a school board member, and those are things that I'll continue to do in the future.
Thanks so much, Rod. You hit three minutes exactly. Good job.
Good job.
Jack, you're up.
All right, let's see if I can keep it within the three minutes. Okay, just go eh. The number one goal for a K to eight school district is to, and my goal is to strive for a positive working environment in a school district, providing the latest proven curriculum and equipment to the best-trained and professional teachers, administrators, and support staff, helping students learn to their best abilities, attaining their highest potential. The reason for that is we have to prepare our students at whatever they are, at whatever level they are when they enter Hellgate Elementary to be ready to succeed at education in the high school, in the high school and beyond. One of the tenants we have stressed is striving for proficiency in reading by grade three, as reading is the key to the exciting adventure of lifelong learning in this ever-changing world. With parent support, we were one of the first districts to have computer-based learning with iPads, and we have finally gotten to the point where all classes have iPads and Chromebooks K through eight. And that's been a huge help, having kids be prepared for high school. I continue to support all the updates and supplies for these systems. Proficiency in math and computer skills go hand in hand along with the hard sciences. Teaching the skill of critical thinking needs to be developed more in discussing of national and world events and youth history. Learning the basic understanding of what the founding fathers of this country, what they left in Europe and what they embraced when writing the Constitution and the laws that followed are extremely important. Might like Rod, I am also fiscally very conservative, and we have been very, very careful of not raising taxes. We do have a large expansion going on. We will be monitoring the lands that are being developed into businesses, homes, and apartments. And depending on the growth trends in the district future, there may be another building program to go ahead and handle the expansion as it's coming. We've done this a few times before. The nice thing is, is one of the mortgages on building number three will be coming to maturation in about five years, so that will be nice. We, I continue to support the development of drama, music, art, shop, tech, and sports offerings at the school. And as a side note, our robotics club will be going to the national competition this month to represent, represent not only our school, but our town, which is pretty cool. And we've always encouraged parent input into our school board in our school board meetings and with talking them with our teachers and our staff. How'd I do?
Perfect. You got five seconds.
I'll do my best.
Tom?
As a member of the Hellgate Elementary Board, I would like to do my part with current board members, two of whom are sitting right next to me, to provide each and every student at Hellgate Elementary School with the quality of educational experiences that they deserve. I'd also like to provide a safe and secure environment for students, teachers, classified staff, and administrators, protecting them from threats coming from both on and off the campus. I'd like to work with board members, parents, and all taxpayers to equip the teachers and administrators with the resources to do their jobs in spite of dwindling COVID funds that have provided us with desperately needed money to weather the pandemic storm. But we know that they're going to be going away. I want to be a good listener, as I mentioned before, and make informed decisions, respecting the input of teachers and parents, administrators, businesses, and all taxpayers in the, in the district. But in the end, I will claim ownership for my decisions while not laying, laying the blame on others. I'd like to help the school to actively reduce their carbon footprint and become an effective user of sustainable, renewable energy. This is our future, and this is the future of our children and our grandchildren. Above all, I want to do what I can to encourage respect and appreciation for the views of one another.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Arlene?
Yeah. Remember, I'm running for the Missoula County Public School Board. And what I'm going to focus on is what I think we need to do in the next year. One is we need to emphasize assessing and addressing the disruptions that were brought about by the pandemic on students' learning and well-being. We need to hire a new superintendent, and we need to adapt to a nationwide shortages of teachers and support personnel. So, all of these are large and complex issues, and will require collaboration between teachers, the board, members of the public administration. And this underscores the next crucial point, which is simply that we need the restoration of healthy and productive interactions between the community and schools that were inevitably frayed by the pandemic. Public education requires partnerships between parents and teachers in which both, this team, focus on the needs and development of children and youth. And so we need both parental and community engagement in which the schools and the community work together to sustain and always improve the opportunities children have to develop their abilities. So, success in rebuilding and strengthening these relationships is key to making the other strides.
Thank you so much. All right. This is Willina, old person. As an incumbent, I serve on the M C P S board and have been a voice for the BIPOC families and the voice for the underrepresented groups in M C P S. Currently, M C P S has 15% BIPOC students, and we need representation and have been very involved with the I Value Group. The I Value Committee is very important to me and those who serve on it. I want to continue to work closely with those who see the need for our communities of color and the LGBTQIA community. To continue to serve on the board, I will continue to elevate those around me and keep an open mind. I do see the need for better community partnership with our local school district, but that was not something we could not something we could address during the pandemic. I follow MCPS policies and understand the procedures. We have been transparent, and I will continue to be transparent. Thank you, Dr. Watson, for your leadership. All right. This is Rob Woolick. I was motivated to run for the school board after coming across a Missoula Current article in November 2021, in which Mr. Michael Gill, I think, the current High School District C trustee, encouraged others to run for the six open MCPS trustee seats this year in order to beat mask mandates and reduce other politically motivated policies in schools. He was not elected, but rather appointed unopposed last year because nobody else was interested in being on the board then. I didn't want to risk him running unopposed again. My primary goal is to keep an anti-science candidate out of that seat. All right. Oh, there's more. I learned, I've learned a lot about the workings of the school board over the last few months as I've talked with some of the other candidates and current trustees. I think most of us are interested in refining and implementing the board's strategic plan from 2021. We have challenges in hiring a new superintendent, addressing capacity issues with the increase of Missoula's population, and returning to normal with everyone back in school physically. Some of the board's business will be a bit of a learning curve for me, such as budgetary issues, but I intend to work with the rest of the board and utilize their expertise in order to make good decisions for the MCPS system and its students, teachers, staff, and families. All right. This is Lorraine Hodge Christensen. My goals are straightforward. I want to do the best for the children and the staff at the school. I want the best curriculum that teaches our kids and our teachers can, and that our teachers can support and implement. I want policies that are clear and concise. I want to support our staff and administrators to continue to run this school as a school of choice that parents want their children to come to and people want to work at. And I want to make sure we are fiscally responsible in the challenging times of managing a school budget. We have been very lucky to have a board that works well together and treats each other with respect. It's important to me that we, that this continues so that we can support the school's functions, staff, and kiddos. And this is Beth Wanberg. My goal is to help form a partnership between educators, parents, and the school board to see that our school is, schools are the best, safest, and cleanest. I will explain that a little later. The last two years have been very hard on students, the faculty that have tried to keep them up to speed, and administrators. It is time to see to it that our students have every opportunity to overcome this deficit. Even though schools here in Montana may be better than the US average, average is not good enough. In the US, our students have been falling behind other developed countries in math, science, and even language arts for decades. I believe we need to put more focus on these core studies. I asked my granddaughter what she thought needed improved, and she surprised me with a great answer. She said she appreciated engaged teachers and thought we needed better curriculum. The surprise is that she is concerned about the parking lots being dirty. She says there's a lot of litter in the parking lot. That seems like something that would be fairly easy to resolve. All right, and here's Jill. I just have to pull her up.
I support a focused and continued effort to address learning loss. Our district must reinforce funding and support for academic interventionists. I support a district-wide goal of helping every student reach grade-level academic progress, as well as providing opportunities for students above grade level. Our teachers need to support, our teachers need support to make these goals a reality. We need to find creative ways to recruit and retain good teachers, which continues to be a challenge. I encourage parent and family involvement at every step of school decision-making. Parents should be heard, respected, and proactively involved in the Missoula County Public Schools, whether it involves curriculum review and selection, scheduling, hiring a superintendent, volunteering in schools, setting school policy, or budgeting. I will work to bring transparency and accountability to the board of trustees. We need to evaluate programs from a budgetary and efficiency perspective. I support the creation of budget and curriculum committees that include all public school stakeholders to review programs and recommend changes. I will do my part to rebuild trust and constructive dialogue between the board, administration, parents, and the Missoula community by listening, learning, and looking for solutions.
All right. So we have about 15 minutes left, and we have about 15 people, so let's all take one minute. We're going to skip down, I think, to the elevator pitch, and just all get one minute to say what you want to leave the audience with. Meg, you want to start us off?
I was going to talk about my favorite place to eat, which is my house. My husband's a chef, but. So elevator speech, let me just switch, switch roles really quick there. You ask the vast majority of kids in Missoula who they want to represent them on their school board, and they're going to say Coach Meg. And I think that that holds value in that I really am about representing the interests of kids, and we as adults know to listen, and we know how to guide them, and I'm really interested in that. This last week alone, I picked up kids with friends at Paxson, I watched kids at the Lowell PTA, so teachers could attend the meeting as a volunteer. I rebuilt the West Side Playground, demolished it, not rebuilt yet, that's in October. I had coffee with a Hellgate High School student who's struggling, who I coach. I met with current board members to talk about policy and the history. I met with teachers that I'm friends with at MCPS. I'm in. This community is everything to me, and our kids, and our family, and our teachers and administrators. Public school is the fabric that literally, to me, is the lifeblood of a community, and I'm so incredibly honored to even be on this platform and to have the time and ear of so many people. I'm a proud Missoulian. I'm a stout and dedicated public servant. I'm a mother. I'm the next generation. It's us young folks now that have kids entering into the public school system that I want to engage with as well.
Thanks, Meg.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Keegan?
All right. I'm also disappointed on the food thing.
Go ahead, go ahead.
But that's because I love taking my kids to Paul's every once in a while in the morning on a weekday. Like, we just get up a little bit earlier, go to Paul's, it's empty-ish at 7:00 AM on a school day, so it's a great place to go. And then, you know, that extended the elevator speech. We were supposed to have 30 seconds. So, the elevator thing. I am Keegan Witt. I am running for MCPS trustee to use my 13 years of experience as a CPA to be the financial expert on the school board, ensuring we govern with a full view of the impacts of our decisions on students and families. I will work to ensure we are providing equitable access to education, supporting teachers and administrators, and keeping the focus on public education rather than politics. I believe this is why I am endorsed by the unions of MCPS.
Thank you. Okay, I amend my statement. Everyone can say their favorite place to eat, okay? Yes. Yeah, I can change. All right, Nathan?
Again, I'm Nathan Gibson. I'm not going to comment on my favorite restaurant, because I haven't received any campaign contributions from a restaurant. But I do just want to say that I am very impressed with the passion and the quality of the people here today, and I really look forward to having the opportunity to work with a few of you.
Thank you. Okay, Amy?
I think that a lot of people think the school board or fixing the schools or helping the schools is too big of a problem, and I think a lot of people have given up and stuck their head in the sand. And I'm here to say that there is hope, there's a lot of hope, and just like a couple of other people said, the kids of this, that are rising up will be the next generation. They are the fabric of the society. But I'm here to represent the parents, because I feel like the parents know better than the kids. I love kids, but my kids are sometimes really stupid. They make crazy decisions, right? And so I just want people to know that I will challenge the status quo, because the reality is, is these problems are big. They're not things that we can do the same things over and over and fix. They're going to take big solutions and big changes, and that's what I hope to bring to the table, an out-of-the-box perspective.
Thank you. All right, Ann?
I wish everyone here the best who is running for the school board. It takes a great deal of time, dedication, and devotion to be on the school board. I'd also like to thank my family, and especially my husband, for their support, and the teachers and classified personnel of MCPS, along with friends, colleagues, and the community for their support.
Okay, thanks. Kyla?
All right. So, again, children are our future. They should be at the center of everything that we do, all the decisions we make, because someday they will be the leaders that are making decisions for us. So we need to make sure that the decisions we make for them now will be healthy decisions for them in the future. So anytime that a sacrifice needs to be made in the community, it should not be made at the detriment to our children. They should be put first. And a big part of doing that is making sure that the parents that love them the most have their voice and have it heard, and that is what I'm going to do, is to make it easier and for everyone to be involved, and make sure that I am actually available to be reached and be the voice for people who can't always attend the meetings. And I do have to say that the fastest path to advocate on their behalf is a trip on the board.
Thanks, Kyla. Okay, Rod?
I've lived all over the country. Born, born in Missoula and lived here most of my life, but at times have lived all over the country, and I can tell you that the restaurants in Missoula are as good or better than anyone, any of the restaurants in the country. I'd put them up against anybody. That being said, my favorite place to eat in Missoula is at my dinner table, and we eat dinner, sit down between 5:30 and 6:00, five days a week, at the dinner table. As a school board member and as an individual running for the school board, I think my record stands on its own. I will continue to advocate for fiscal responsibility, continue to advocate for our taxpayers, for our parents, and for our students. And I appreciate your time this evening, and I would appreciate if you live in the Hellgate Elementary School District, that you would, might, might think about voting for me for school board. Thank you.
Thanks. Jack?
Okay, this is a hard one. River City Grill for dinner and bread pudding, and the $1 ice cream cone at McDonald's. Thank you for your consideration and voting for me for the Hellgate School Board. I love the job of being a school board trustee for Hellgate Elementary School District, the first school district in the Missoula Valley. I hope I will be able to continue to serve with an open door, our exceptional taxpayers, our parents, our students, teachers, and staff for this next term. I thank you for tuning in and taking time to listen to this broadcast.
Thank you. All right, Tom?
I'd like to thank Sarah and Christina for organizing and hosting this event. Thanks for all the people that showed up, and I think this has been a very valuable evening. I'm Tom Cook. I'm running for the Board of Trustees at Hellgate Elementary School. I have the deepest respect for every member of the current board, and I applaud them for their hard work and their commitment to the school over their many years. I do not have all the answers, however, I plan to listen and learn with an open mind and a fair heart. Finally, I am not a one-issue candidate. I have no axes to grind, no underlying motives for running. I'm Tom Cook. I'm running for the Board of Trustees at Hellgate Elementary School. I'm here to ask for the vote of those living in the Hellgate Elementary District Number Four. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Arlene?
Yes, well, he kind of stole what I was going to say, which was to thank you guys for organizing this. My name again, because it's very long, is Arlene Walker Andrews. I offer relevant experience, knowledge, and genuine concern for our children and our future. So simply put, I am serious about education.
Thank you so much. All right, we're going to run through these one more time. This is Walina Oldperson. Let's see. Tamarack for food, okay? Okay, here we go. I stand by my choices as a current MCPS Board of Trustee. I use my voice as a parent and as a BIPOC person. Access and representation is key to our student success in public education. You trusted me before with your vote. Please let me continue to be the voice needed for our underrepresented community members. Thank you, and don't forget to vote on May 3rd. She stole my line. Okay. This is Rob Woolick. Jakers. Okay. I'm a responsible adult with educator experience, and I'm interested in working with the rest of the board in order to make the best decisions we can for the MCPS system. I plan to review every public comment, make good choices for everyone, and keep politics out of the school system. You can learn more about me at robformissoula.com. Thank you for your consideration. All right, Loriann Hodge Christensen. Let's see. I feel passionately about this school and all the awesome things we do for the staff and kiddos. I have been honored to be a part of this school board, and I hope I'm able to continue. I don't see, I don't see the restaurant. Oh, they, she doesn't eat out often. Okay, good. Okay, that was close. Okay, Beth Wanberg. The next generation deserves the best education that we can provide them. They will need the best to be able to compete in a worldwide marketplace. The reason I'm running for school board trustee is that here in Montana, we can do a better job of educating our children, and they deserve it. The last two years have caused them to fall behind, and we can do better. What I bring to the table is a wide range of experience with many types of school systems. I have first- and second-hand experience with public, private, and home schools in Montana and Virginia. I was educated in the public schools in Alaska, California, Montana, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. I believe my observations will help me represent you well on the Missoula County Public School Board. Please trust me to listen to you as a parent, educator, and interested party, and represent you on the Board of Trustees. My slogan is "Trust Beth for the MCPS trustee," and I hope I can count on your vote. She gave a top five, but that's unfair. We can continue, oh, this is Jill Taper, by the way. We can continue with more of the same on the MCPS Board of Trustees, or we can try a different approach. I'm that new approach. I will stand up for Missoula families who felt unheard. I will listen to all perspectives. Putting our students first, respecting the rights of our families to advocate for their kids, and empowering teachers to be effective educators are my top priorities. I believe those goals will best serve the future of our community, and that the conversations surrounding those goals can serve as an example for our kids on how to look for solutions in a complicated landscape. Ooh, Camby is her favorite restaurant. All right, I think we did it with three minutes to go. I want to thank everyone on the panel. All of you are taking time out of your lives and effort and energy to volunteer and serve your community, and that's so laudable. Thank you to our organizers who put all of this together so that our community can be educated about our candidates. Thanks to the audience for staying educated and taking time from your day and the people watching. Thanks to the library, and thanks for MCAT for their help as well. Vote on May 3rd, and thanks for coming.